In order to justify any removal of a tree. So you're looking at a lot of time and energy and effort, uh taxpayer dollars for uh personal requests. And so that's why um those fees are what they are. Um King City has the lowest tax rate of uh any city in the metro region here. Um and you'll find that our tax rates are even lower than uh Washington County on a lot of different things. So we don't have a lot of excess money to be um spending on individual projects, if you will. Does that make sense?
Well, I I hear what you're saying. It it doesn't make sense to me. It looks like a good money making deal for the city uh. When you know that HOA is planning to remove lots of trees in in this area. So it's a lot, it's a lot of money. It goes directly to us and our fees, which a number of you sitting there are in the HOA that I'm talking about.
Well, I just approved thirty one trees for fifty dollars and it cost us about five thousand dollars to investigate.
Yeah, and and let me interject that it's it's important to understand that uh this was a unique situation that we've never been faced with before. But we've got to keep up our pace with the times. And timing for doing this, where we can always say that this is not good timing to do certain things. But there's a cost for doing business that we have to contend with. And we must make these changes as they are presented to us. So we will continue to uh try to be as understanding as we possibly can in terms of the cost of doing business and the impact to the residents for certain things. But we still have to, we can't let the city uh suffer because the timing may not be right for some uh when we raise these fees. I just think it's that important for us to make the kind of changes that are necessary to keep pace with the cost of doing business. So uh now there's still a lot more conversation that's going to be had on uh the uh uh fee structure. Uh what we wanted to do tonight, we just introduced it. Uh we wanted our council to have an opportunity to review it in more detail. Uh but we're not going to get into a detailed conversation about the schedule fees tonight. So uh that's the basic plan. So uh yes, and I I respect the fact that there's concern. But at the same time, uh we will never do anything intentionally to hurt the residents of King City. But uh we all must understand that uh there's a cost to do business and we've got to keep pace with it. So uh I I that may not be the answer you want, uh Mr. Woods, but uh there's still more conversation that has to be had regarding these kinds of things. Okay? Anybody else? Okay, uh thank you, Gary. I appreciate it. And uh we will move on.
There uh Sean, I wanted to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sean.
Oh, it um I was just gonna ask if there's any openings on the budget committee, cuz um it seems like Gary has an interest in in the budget. And if there's a opening, maybe that might be an opportunity. I'm not sure if there's an opening. Does anyone know?
Ronnie. Alright, Ronnie's looking right now. I think there might be like.
It's a good question.
Yeah, I think there's like one, Sean.
You know, there's one, there's one opening for the budget committee. Uh and that's position four.
So Gary, I'm not sure if that's something you'd be interested in being involved with, but it'd be a great way to um, you know, really get involved and and make a difference in our community. So I think that um if you are interested, I I I think that you would talk to Ronnie. Correct me if I'm wrong regarding the application procedure.
Yep.
Hey, thank you.
Alright, good call, Sean. Okay, alright, uh thank you. We're closing the public forum and moving on to uh new business. And we're at seven point one. Uh Ronnie, why don't you just uh talk about what you were going to say about uh the fee schedule, you or Mike?
Uh just, Mike, you wanna head it off or?
Sure. So um like I was telling Mr. Woods just a second ago, is uh you know, the cost of doing business uh kind of caught up to us on a larger scale. Um the Edgewater uh situation brings a lot to light and uh we spend a lot of time, energy, uh resources out investigating, uh umpteen dozen trees. And we have a fee of like fifty bucks. The original fee was designed for just your backyard tree. And uh it didn't take into account um and request such like such as this. Um so what? It didn't specify the number of trees, even though it was designed for a single tree. Um so it there was like this gray area that uh the Edgewater permit kind of fell into. Um where it ends up costing us anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars of uh staff time, site visits, time with an arborist, investigating, um and talking with our engineers, all these things end up adding up. And so um what we're looking at is what's the cost per tree and how do we divide that up? So that's one of the elements that's in here. A few of the others are um associated with permits.
I I can talk about that one, Mike, if you like.
Okay, I'll just kind of let me walk through a couple more here, Ronnie. Um but a couple others are uh ways that we can do a full cost accounting for our time and services that are being rendered for uh permits, uh subdivision reviews, uh planning commission reviews, city council reviews. All those things require a public notice. Uh they require, some of them require a published notice. Published notice is like seven hundred and eighty dollars or eight hundred and ninety-five dollars if we go in the Oregonian or Tiger Times. Um they also require a mail notice, everyone within uh two hundred and fifty feet, typically within city limits. All those things cost money. And so with a lot of those things, if it requires a public hearing, what we're requesting is a uh deposit for the time and energy and anything that we don't use, uh we refund back to the uh app. Um it's just a way that we have of making sure that we're not going in the hole for uh to augment or subsidize development as it's going to be coming down the pipe here in the near future. So with that, Ronnie, I'm gonna hand it off to you. We are also looking at um one of the elements is uh our operating software. Um Ronnie, I don't know if you want to go into the Cassell platform at this moment. But uh the Cassell platform going from our QuickBooks operating, which we've done for some time, that our auditors keep dinging us on cuz there's uh that lack of record in the record retentions in the QuickBooks. Um so in order to get that off of our audit as a comment, we need to upgrade our system. One of the systems that we've looked at and that we've really uh considered is being probably the most feasible, uh the most operable for what we do. And the most beneficial for our organization is the Cassell platform. Um but with the Cassell platform comes added costs of operating. And so um by slight adjustments in our fees, slight adjustments in the monies that we collect for our services, uh we can negate a lot of those expenses over the course of two, three, five, ten years. So uh anyways, Ronnie, go ahead and take it away.
Just a spin off of just the Cassell program here since, so next meeting uh September sixteenth, you guys will uh discuss and consider uh Cassell's proposal. That will be in the next packet. Uh just yeah, that's all I can, that's all I can say on that one. Um I do have a memo that I sent to Mike. If you guys would like it, I can send that to you later, but it's pretty simple. Um and then the the biggest change that we are doing with the master fee schedule is the buildings program. The buildings programs fees have not been changed since two thousand and six, um which requires public notice to the state of Oregon, uh Building uh Contractors Association and a public notice. So that is scheduled, the public meeting is scheduled for uh September sixteenth too. Um and that is, there's two things going on with that one. It's a twenty percent increase overall for the buildings program per uh for the permits. And then we're also adding a a city surcharge, which will cover the Cassell program. So there's that. Uh do you guys have any questions on the formula or anything that I used?
Well, I I I think there's still an opportunity for reviewing.
Yeah. Uh and then for the for the most part, uh CPI increase was used for uh a lot of the items, unless otherwise noted in the document. Um and to answer Gary's question on parking, let me get to it.
Isn't that in our special zones?
Yeah, it's only in the parking zones.
Yeah, it's only in the parking zones, but it is kind of somewhat com- complicated.
And Mike, I have a question about the trees. I don't want to open up a huge can of worms, but after after Ronnie, you're done. I I just.
Go 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 ahead. I'm looking for the.
Why why don't you look for it? My, Mike, do we have any indication? And there's a lot of confusion over, I think, why Edgewater is trying to remove these trees from, in your understanding, is it simply that the roots, I understand that the root barriers, right, the trees lack root barriers. I understand that. But is it, are they saying that they're a hazard because of the sidewalk lifts? Or are they saying that the roots on all of these trees are infiltrating the irrigation systems?
And they're saying that the trees are a hazard because of sidewalk lifts, which doesn't qualify in our ordinance as a nuisance. So.
It also doesn't really qualify in any other, I mean, every other city.
No, it doesn't.
Every homeowner has the responsibility when they have a street tree in front of their home that so I I don't understand why the HOA is, we're trying to remove all these huge, beautiful trees that establish the aesthetics of our neighborhood and and are in line with the vision of the city. And I don't wanna, I know, I don't want to open a huge can of worms cuz it's not on the agenda. It's top tonight and it's the HOA, yada, yada, but uh but I I.
That's essentially why I had to deny it, Counselor Fender. Um when their initial request came in for like the three hundred trees that they were planning on cutting out of there, uh we had to deny it because the nuisance ordinance doesn't account for sidewalks lifting as being a nuisance. It it specifically calls out um damage to a sewer line, a water line, breaking a power line. Um it it does not account for uh sidewalks.
So currently, right now, every time they request a tree to be removed, you have to essentially investigate to see if anything is being obstructed underneath the soil, like a sewer line or any of that. I mean, that that's an amount of time for hundreds and hundreds of trees. If the issue is simply sidewalk lifting.
Yeah, exactly. And it it's not cost effective. And you know, the way that the ordinance is written is um very, well, it's it's literally a tree preservation ordinance. It's there to prohibit the cutting of trees.
Of course, because people have also, they have aesthetic. People have taste, right? Some people like the look of something, so you have to preserve that, right?
Yeah.
Um uh one last question, I'm sorry, is for isn't another option, couldn't an option be that simply root barriers are installed in the current trees that are there? Isn't that so much more cost effective? And do we have any understanding why the HOA has not investigated putting simply putting in root barriers to the trees that are already there?
Because I think they're looking at doing it wholesale, where they rip all the trees out, dig the ditch, and then put the the entire channel of root barrier.
Okay.
Whereas.
Instead of just tree per tree?
Yeah, whereas an arborist would come in and say, well, look, we can do this. All we have to do is um cut the tree right here, put the root barrier here, and then we can repave. And your sidewalk would be protected. But the problem with that is, of course, that the root will find a way, right?
Sure.
So it will go around the root barrier that you just put in.
Potentially.
Yeah, a- and that's why I think other cities haven't uh given any credence to the sidewalk lift. Uh it's more of an yeah, it's a personal nuisance, but it's not a uh nuisance that's gonna have long term effect, you know?
Right, okay.
And and then so I just to kind of close this loop, uh you had a request to remove, how many trees and how many did you approve to be removed?
Okay, so after I toured um with Octavio from uh Pacific Breeze, I believe it's their uh group.
Yeah, specific landscape.
Yeah, uh I went around and just explained to him what's in the nuisance code, what's identified as being a legitimate reason to cut out a tree. And we toured the entire Edgewater uh area and went tree by tree. And it's like, that tree is a maybe, might be able to get us there if I have some sort of evidence. That one's a no. That one's a yes, because it's like breaking the water mains or it's breaking the, it's called blocking the sewer line, or it's breaking apart the stormwater intake, you know? Those things I can, I can sign off on. And so they came back with a revised ask of around thirty-nine, forty trees. Um we approved thirty-one of them and denied, I think, like eight or nine. So that, and we did that under the original permit. So what they did is they submitted their three hundred tree requests. We're like, look, we're gonna have to deny this. And then they said, okay, well, what can we do? They withdrew the permit, uh revised it and resubmitted. And with that was the submittal for um redoing the roundabout. So um you know, we don't see anything wrong with the roundabout right now. Um there's really nothing there that would lend us to believe that something's going on there. But uh you know, it was one of those things where like, like, okay, look, you want to do a beautification project there? You want to do this and that? We're gonna um put it as a uh like a land- landscape architectural project um for beautification purposes. And so we tied it in and uh we went ahead and authorized that along with the thirty-one trees.
So uh so going back to the fee schedule, how much did the HOA have to pay for the permit to have these thirty-one trees?
Fifty bucks.
How much?
Fifty bucks.
That's it, the thirty-one trees. And the amount of time that you spent.
Probably about ten thousand dollars worth.
To uh get this done. So uh now, if they were doing it under to the new revised fee schedule, how much would that have cost?
Uh it uh it would have still cost the city about seven thousand dollars.
Okay, how much would it cost the HOA to apply for the permit to remove those thirty-one trees?
Uh thirty-one hundred dollars.
Okay, and that is more in line with what it costs the city to do.
It cost us about ten thousand dollars to issue the permit this time around.
I got you.
So it's still what it costs us seven thousand, but it's less of a hit.
Right, so uh you can see where the alignment has to take place and where uh that relationship between the cost of the city doing this business versus the cost of uh requesting the permit to do that work by an HOA. That's important for us all to understand. So I I was hoping that we wouldn't spend as much time on this because I know that we're gonna have more conversation about it. Uh Ronnie, what uh was the uh one piece that you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, just the parking. So the parking it's kind of so we still have to order the parking tickets emblem, you know, that for that, that costs money. That's about five dollars each one. Okay, uh we still have to use staff time and all that good, good, wonderful stuff. So but the current resolutions for our parking permits um state that they will not be charged any fees. Um so anything from today, you know, from October first back, it won't be charged any fees until we rectify that in some other way. Uh but anybody else that wants to do a street parking program, like like uh Southwest King Charles, royalty Parkway, anybody like that, it will cost them sixty-six dollars per permit for for the year. And that's in line with all the other parking structures throughout the throughout the metro region.
Okay, uh well, that makes sense.
And that and that covers staff time, uh materials. And um and and that goes for the same thing for the uh alarm permits too.
So in in every case, uh the folks who got their uh uh parking programs, whether it be the Highlands or whether it be.
Now, now Highlands is completely different.
Okay.
Yeah, Highlands HOA does their own program.
Okay.
Established through the ordinance.
Alright, I scratched that.
Yeah.
They got a really good deal.
But everyone else, besides.
They, whoever else got one got a good deal, right?
It's only people who want new parking program. So if if Edgewater decides they now want to have permits, then they are gonna have to pay this.
That that that's if the city admin.
If it was approved, yeah.
And and there's a lot of work that goes into that. And that's my point. So everybody got a good deal on that one because the fee structure wasn't there. But we know for the future, there's gonna be a cost associated with it, and we want to make sure that we capture that. And same thing goes with these trees. We've never had a wholesale request like this in order to remove thirty, forty trees. So the HOA got a really good deal on this.
Yeah, fifty bucks.
Fifty bucks or whatever, a hundred dollars, even if it's a hundred, it's a good deal. But anytime something like this comes again, the cost will be in alignment with what is costing the city. That's what it boils down to. I can't imagine this kind of request coming again anytime soon. You know, it's gonna be more likely on an individual basis, but the HOA of Edgewater got a good deal on this.
Yeah, I mean, and the only reason that this one cost so much is because it was one of a kind. It was new to us. So you know, we had legal review, we had engineering review. You know, we talked with uh planning, we talked with Keith a little bit, you know, we went back and forth in the office here.
Yeah.
Dave spent time on it, Ronnie spent time on it, I spent time on it. You add all those up and it gets up there pretty quick and and you're kind of like, well, we just spent too much money on this project.
So we're making the adjustment. That's what we're doing. We're making the adjustment for future requests as we move forward. Uh because now we know how much work we have to put into it, what it costs us, and what people should be charged if they want to do this kind of work in the city or with these kind of requests. So.
And the other thing was the ownership of the trees. Like we had to do a whole investigation to find out, you know, the ownership of the trees and right away and who's responsible and.
There's a lot. It's a lot. So I'm not scared of raising fees, uh but we do have to understand that there's some unique uh requests that have come to us in the last few years, and we have to make these adjustments. That's what it boils down to. So.
We're gonna have more in the future too. So.
Yeah.
You know, look with an eye to the future as well.
That's right. Okay, so uh what's the next step for the the fee structure?
So this is basically an introduction to uh the fees that we're tossing around. This is more for council topic to kind of uh introduce it to you, um give you a chance to dig into the material, review it, uh get back to the staff with any questions, concerns, or issues that you have. It was actually supposed to be a pretty quick topic, but.
Thirty minutes later.
But I heard. But you know, it just happens that way sometimes. Okay.
So so uh next meeting, it will be a this uh discussion and consideration.
Yeah.
Right.
And then along with the public hearing for the uh buildings codes permits and.
We'll all be prepared for that.
Alrighty.
Thanks.
Okay, okay. So are we done with that subject now?
Yes.
Any other questions or concerns before we move on? Okay, we added a seven point one point five, which is the update on the transportation system plan, otherwise known as the TSP. Mike, why don't you, you're intro.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna introduce the TSP by starting a share screen. Um this is from our consultant's uh DKS and through their subs JLA. So if you all can bear with me here, um hopefully I'm still on. Alright, so uh you go to the project information. This will be on the webpage. I'm gonna show you the nice video first cuz I don't think I can get back to it. Um so here goes. Can everyone see the video?
Yes.
Alright, here we go.
King City is planning for the future. Our city is growing and so are the transportation needs. And that is why we are developing our first transportation system plan, or known as TSP. As we shape our city's TSP, we need your help to accommodate all ages and abilities and to serve our future walkers, bikers, transit users, and drivers. The TSP will be the framework for safe, well-connected transportation system, policy standards, and future projects list, and funding options. It will be the roadmap for how our city will grow and get around. Our population more than doubled in the last twenty years and is approaching five thousand. To plan for additional growth, King City is being proactive in planning now for future use and how everyone will get around. This project is for all of King City, including the Western Expansion Area. We will consider how people get to our businesses and underdeveloped areas and plan for complete streets everywhere in town. With this plan, we'll look closely at the streets people use most and assess how to make key intersections and active transportation options safer, more reliable, and less congested. As we continue to plan for the future of our transportation system, we invite all big ideas and input. We want you to get involved. The draft a plan that represents everyone. We need feedback from everyone, including those who use assistance to get around and who speak languages other than English. Help us shape the future of King City. Visit kingcitytsp.org to find out more and how to get involved.
Okay, so that's our video. Oh, and then uh it'll have a page like this. You can go into the survey, which is right here. And then that'll walk you through um a little survey that gives you questions, helps us kind of get an idea of where everything's going. Who you are, what's your makeup, as well as kind of like um any additional information that you want to provide or or assist us with. Yeah. It it also has the map right here. So you can go into King City and look at the map. Um you can go into the project information page, which is that which we just looked at. Um you can go to the TSP webpage, um which has a link. Can everyone see now the King City? I'll go here first. Um this is what the webpage will look like. It'll have um information on uh the project, where we're going. There's a TSP fact sheet. Um the fact sheet will have additional information. Hopefully, I'm not moving too fast here. It just has links for the project information, where we're going, um what we're considering, and uh how it's going to look for the future. Um it should provide links to where you're going um and what's going on with it.
Great.
Trying to get it to, hang on, with this one. It has background page, what's been going on. There's the library, so you can find out um what the public information plan is, what our guidelines are, what a TSP is, as well as the fact sheet. And then it'll have events. So this will be listed on where the events will be. And then you can always provide your comments on the final page and submit it in, and it'll all be collected for the transportation system plan. Yes, Counselor Vayner.
They're muted.
Yeah, will the transportation plan look at the areas um south of Fisher? It's currently in the county, but we intend to bring into the city. Um otherwise known as Bradley Woods.
Yeah, it should look at that area. Um it should also look at everywhere from, oh, if we go back, hang on. Yeah, um can't really, it's kind of, looks like it's leaving that area out right now. Can't really, it's kind of looks like it's leaving that area out right now.
Basically west, isn't it west of one thirty-seventh sort of?
Yeah, but we can, they're just looking at everything within our current city boundary and but you do bring up a good point, Councilor Boehner, I will definitely talk to them about um looking at that. I wanted to look at, yeah, because right now it's kind of out.
Yeah.
Um so I will talk to them about adding some inclusion here so that we can at least consider a trail over, so.
And and that's why it's important for us to do this, so that you guys can see where we're moving with this. Uh you know, they've done some good work so far, but by uh no means do we consider this uh everything we need. So your input is important, that's why we wanted to do this tonight.
So on this map, you kind of get the idea of the project of the expansion area and the current boundaries. Um but yeah, I'll have to bring that into their.
And I also noticed they didn't include um the other uh cannabis store on on the highway, which we plan to have in our city as well.
Yeah, and I think our boundary goes up to the highway right here too, so.
Yeah.
Okay, good, 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 good conversation, Gretchen.
Yeah, so we'll need to bring those to their attention.
Yeah.
Okay, any uh one else? Wanna hear from you? Uh just let me comment, uh one of the things that uh Mike and I have been stressing to them and along with Keith that, you know, this COVID has changed things and we really need to figure out, really dig deep to figure out how to communicate with the community. I believe that with uh uh Zoom opportunities and virtual meetings, we can potentially engage a lot more people than we would if we were just having a meeting at Deer Creek Elementary. You know, and but we have to work toward that. I don't think that's just going to be an assumption that people are gonna be more uh uh interested in participating virtually. We have to encourage it, we have to get people to understand the benefit of it so that they can in fact get involved. Every step of the way, we hear uh people who uh complain that they don't know what's going on, that nobody told me this, nobody, I never heard of this. We hear that all the time, so uh this is going to be an effort that says there's no reason, if you really wanna know, if you really wanna know what's going on and if you really wanna know how to be involved, this is your opportunity and that's what this effort is gonna be driving towards, so and I think it's a good start.
If you don't mind me commenting on that, I think uh somewhat to Gary's point though i- is the the fact that the five-thirty time is probably difficult for a lot of folks. Um and so maybe when we are getting more into the planning of this, if we are still in a situation where we're needing to do Zoom meetings instead, we consider popping it back to the seven o'clock timeframe or something akin to what we were doing when we had in-person meetings.
And and I agree, we have, and I had this conversation earlier with another group, that this is a paradigm shift, but we have to figure out what works. You know, we didn't get a whole lot of participation when we had it at seven o'clock, but we were doing it differently then. So does that combination of virtual and seven o'clock work better than seven o'clock and a meeting at City Hall?
Yes, I think can because a lot of folks don't in King City don't drive at night.
Right.
And this would be able to do outreach to those who don't drive at night.
Okay, and I and I think that's, all those are good points, so we're gonna have to figure that out. And what's the optimal time for people to take advantage of the virtual meetings so that we can engage as many people as we possibly can, because it's gonna be so important. And we have to be flexible in order to do that, okay? You remember when we first started virtually, we said, well, we can do it a lot earlier because we don't have to wait until dinnertime to do this. So we, I think the first one was at three, then we moved it to five, okay? And now maybe we're figuring it out that maybe it really can be most beneficial if it's at seven, so we'll.
Well, I I don't know, I would probably disagree with that.
Yeah, I don't.
I think it's a, I get it, you know, um but we are turning more and more to a virtual era and essentially what you're doing is just uh wasting staff time for four more hours and costing the city instead of just two hours of extra time, we're costing us uh four hours of extra time for uh participation numbers that don't increase. Uh we've seen the numbers at seven o'clock and they're no more than they are now. So uh I I think it's a wash either way. I think if we're doing them digitally, then there's really no reason to have them that late. If if we're doing it digitally, because you can get there anytime, anywhere.
Not necessarily, I I I don't agree with that. Uh you know, for for those of us that are are still working, working during the day, this is really, i- it can be difficult um to to be able to shift gears and get into this uh right a- right afterwards. Um I'm not saying that this is a bad time, I'm just saying that that we ought to at least consider uh alternatives and I do understand that that means more time as far as for staff. So I it's just finding a a compromise that that works and possibly pushes up our our participation.
And this is the kind of conversation that we need to have, because this is, I I think this type of format is gonna be with us for a while. You know, whether we like it or not, you know, and we need to make the best of it. And I don't have the answer, you know, I will be at a meeting no matter what time you want me to be at that meeting, but my flexible uh flexibility is different from you working folks and I understand that. And that's the exact same conversation I had uh this morning when we were talking about uh training for L O C, the League of Oregon Cities, what time is the optimal time to have training to reach the uh maximum number of people that we can, it's the same thing, you know? So uh everybody's trying to make that adjustments and I I think we will figure it out, but I just don't know what it is today, but we need to keep talking about this, okay?
Yeah, and tha- and that's the reason I brought it up is I think it needs to continue the conversation and 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 be at least willing to consider uh if there would be better participation at a different time or or if it's i- it's just a more convenient time for a more larger consensus that that may we consider it.
And and also, Mike, you know, in that survey question, you know, that uh question about uh uh the survey piece of uh the outreach, you know, that's the kind of question that needs to be asked too, and I don't know that is in there. So uh for you to participate and try to get some uh trends on what is the most likely correct time to get the optimal participation is a question that I think needs to be asked in the survey.
And Ken, one more comment, I still say we have to remember twenty percent of the people in King City do not have computers and we're gonna have to do um some, some sort of of mailing.
Oh, we will have a, uh there'll be a hybrid piece, there is even a piece for some of the events that are gonna be coming up that will be live meetings in person with the proper social distancing and
Yeah.
crowd size and all that, uh as long as we feel that it can be controlled and those kinds of things. But we're not totally scrapping those things, but uh we just need to figure out the proper mix.
No, I understand, I just want to make sure we don't forget those folks.
Haven't forgotten that, no.
But I think it's important too that people under, I mean, I think our first hurdle is really making sure that people know that there's meeting, right? But I and I also think it's really important that for those that don't have computers, that any Zoom meeting, they can call and attend simply by telephone. They don't have the luxury of seeing our pretty faces, but they can still listen in. And so uh I think it's important that we const, you know, we we make sure that people know Zoom isn't just computer, it's also just audio.
Right, that's correct, yeah.
So I would also like to point out that everything you guys are saying, we're also live on TV too, so don't. So okay, so I mean, we got phones, we got TV, so if you can't.
Yeah.
I mean, there there, we have options.
We do, and I wanna say that a good friend of mine was recovering in the hospital and watched our last uh council meeting in his hospital bed as his entertainment and we helped him heal, so.
Okay, all right, so uh any other questions? Mike, you have any more comments on this piece? We just wanted to make sure that the council is as up to date as can be with what's getting ready to uh go live. And uh Mike, when do you think uh this particular uh item will go live for the public?
The public outreach piece?
Yes.
The website.
Um I think we're about ready to launch that, I would have to check with Jessica and their team at J L A, but um as you can see, it's pretty much in the final steps and it's all the comments are in, the final drafts are almost done, so I think it's about ready to hit the streets. So I would expect over the next couple of weeks, it should hit the streets and we should start seeing some feedback, it looks like we have events in September. So I imagine it's gonna go live in the next week or two, we're gonna have events scheduled for September. We're gonna start collecting public outreach or public information and uh inputs over the next, you know, two to three months. And uh then as we head into uh those long, dark winter nights, uh we'll have plenty of time to discuss the matter uh before we come up with some uh solid concepts.
Okay, all right, that sounds good, and I want you guys to know that video that I did was the most uncomfortable I've ever felt in doing one of these, and I'll tell you why. It was scripted, they wanted me to say what they wanted me to say, and I'm used to just talking.
We're gonna have to get you your own uh gold star on the sidewalk out there.
Mike?
Go ahead.
I I have a question, I I know our consultant is part of the T G M uh grant process is doing its current status analysis, where are they on that, are they done doing that? The zero base before they plan, you know?
Oh, you mean like uh the background and?
Yes.
All that jazz?
Yeah, they finished that piece.
Yeah, I think most of the um background investigations and uh baseline documents have all been um wrapped up, like there's the baseline land use document, the baseline uh economic baseline transportation. Um all those documents are part of the um in public information that would be released for right kind of reviewing, seeing where to start.
The reason I'm asking is there's been a series of emails going around um from some of the River uh Rivermead people thinking they're being cut out of the process and the one comment I wrote is that they had to do the baseline study before they started anything, so I just wanna make sure we're all in the loop.
Yeah, we we really haven't even started yet, it's just a lot of information gathering, as you're aware of, in the very beginning. And that just allows us, when somebody asks a question, to actually be able to know what the answer is, so.
So we will get there and everybody should have this information available to it shouldn't be anybody in the community, including Rivermead, that should know what's going on. That's the goal. Okay, uh now, any other questions regarding that? Uh because we do have to move on to seven point two and see if we can get this thing wrapped up as uh quickly as we possibly can. Uh so uh Mike and uh Keith, you guys ready?
I'm just gonna pass it to Keith, my job's easy here. Okay, uh good evening, everybody. Um so this is uh uh about an ordinance that we're, that we've developed uh that the Planning Commission has reviewed already, it has to do with uh accessory dwelling units. And there are proposed amendments to the Community Development Code or CDC as we refer to it. Um I have a staff report that starts on page forty-six of your uh meeting packet. So before we get into that, Keith, we better announce that uh this is a.